Okay, good, good evening, everybody. Before we get started tonight, I would like to ask Sarah Ledart to lead us in our invocation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If you would please pray with me. Dear Lord, may we begin by asking for you to grant peace to the loved ones of the nearly 3,110 Georgians that have lost their lives to COVID-19. We also want to thank you for the work you accomplished through the life of Representative John Lewis. Help us engage in good trouble. Tonight, we are gathered to serve our community, to use our resources wisely, to represent all members of our community, and to make decisions that promote the common good. We pray for our mayor and council, for the various levels of city officials, and for the agenda set before them this evening. We ask that you would graciously grant them confidence in their knowledge of what is good and fitting for those who choose to make Milton their home. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, July 20th, 2020, to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully, and if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, please bring your comment card to the clerk as soon as possible. While the Milton rules allow speakers to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards will be accepted. The clerk can please call roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the July 20th, 2020, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to comment, to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourselves by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of the organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chambers is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outburst, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly and Councilmember Rick Morgan are joining us. Thank you, Carol. And Rick Morgan?
He's trying to join in, but he will be joining in.
Okay. And for the record, Councilmember Peyton Jameson and Rick, I'm sorry, just Councilmember Peyton Jameson is absent. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with love, peace, and justice for all.
Again, welcome to City Hall tonight, and we appreciate you being here and attendance to our meeting. Tammy, I want to ask if you will sound the next item.
The next item is the approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 2187.
Okay, I would, I would like to, it's okay with council, move the agenda item number 20, or number 20-190, the approval of the contract between the City of Milton and Crofton Associates for the architectural design for the fire station 42, from this consent agenda to, or from consent agenda to new business. I'd also like to add an executive session to discuss possible litigation. Any other changes? If not, I'll ask for a motion on the agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, very quickly, just for the record, as we're beginning to take your vote on that, just to advise that with respect to the retirement agreement that is in your, on the consent agenda, I have provided updated copies of its current version of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all.
Okay, just to clarify, you've given the copies of the current one to the council members that are.
That's correct.
Okay, have a motion for approval as amended by Councilmember Bentley, and I believe Councilmember Moore was close, but Councilmember Moore was the second. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Cookerly, are you there?
I said aye.
Okay.
I am.
And is Councilmember Morgan yet?
Yes, and I think he's trying to speak.
Okay.
I can't tell.
All right, well, that's unanimous for all those that, obviously, Councilmember Jameson's not here, and we'll have to confirm with Councilmember Morgan. All right, do we have any general public comment tonight?
We do, Mayor.
Okay, our next item is public comment, general public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. City encourages you right now to review the agenda, and if you wish to speak, bring your comment cards to the clerk. Okay, if we can move on to the.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bill.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Bill Madden.
Bill Madden, 790 Quarter Path Lane. So, my wife and I watched the working session last week on the former Milton Country Club. It was of particular interest to us because our property neighbors the park. During the working session, the section of trail that comes very close to our house was called Trail Section Number Five. I would like to provide the council with some background information on this section of trail. The concept plan for the park was approved by the council during the August 29th, 2019 meeting. As neighboring homeowners, we participated actively in the public input sessions and community surveys during the development phase of the plan. The approved concept plan is called, called for Trail Section Number Five to run alongside and within an existing tree line. A portion of this section of trail would also be constructed of boardwalk because it crossed areas of wetland. Personally, we were quite happy with this trail plan because the topography of the land and the existing tree line provided a natural buffer to our property. We also thought this plan would provide a nice shaded walking path which highlighted the natural beauty of the land to the public. During the city council meeting of May 18th, 2020, an engineering plan for the trail was presented which shows a significant change of plan for the Trail Section Number Five. The boardwalk was entirely eliminated, and the trail path was redirected away from the tree line to use a large portion of the existing golf cart path. The path of the trail now comes very close to our property. We believe it likely comes within 25 feet of our property line, although we're not 100% sure based on the quality of the maps that are available to us. Additionally, the topography of the land no longer provides us with a natural buffer. The trail is now at the same elevation as our backyard. We have many windows on the backside of our house, and you can see directly into our house from the path of the proposed trail. We have both safety and privacy concerns with this path. Immediately after this proposal on May 18th, I sent the council an email about our concerns with the new plan. I also later learned that several of my neighbors also reached out to city council with similar concerns, and as a result of this outreach, myself along with neighbors from Quarter Path Lane met with Public Works Director Robert Drury and City Engineer Sarah Leaders on May 26th at the property. We had a very positive meeting where they listened to our concerns and discussed several possible solutions. These proposals were presented to the council during last week's working session. Unfortunately, I do not believe that you're provided with all the background that I've just provided to you today. In the last week, I've had the opportunity to speak with many of you. Several of you have even taken the opportunity to come out and walk the property to get better acquainted, and I really appreciate those that did. I'm asking for you to please reconsider the alternative options for Trail Section Number Five before going out to bid on this project. I really feel like there's a win-win solution that meets the overall budget, provides good value for the taxpayers, and is still sensitive to our concerns and those of our neighbors on Quarter Path Lane. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more general public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next item, consent agenda.
Sure. The first item on the consent agenda is approval of the June 1st, 2020, regular city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 2188. Next is the approval of the June 8th, 2020, special called city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 2189. Next, we have the approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Ross Plus Associates to amend the impact fee ordinance and complete the capital improvements element, 2020 annual update, Agenda Item Number 2191. Next is the approval of a retirement agreement for Jim Craig, Agenda Item Number 2192. Next, we have the approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Complete Demolition Services LLC at the former Milton Country Club active area, Agenda Item Number 2193. Our sixth item is the approval of an easement agreement for drainage areas on 14875 Thompson Road, Agenda Item Number 2194. Our next item is the approval of a task order between the City of Milton and BM and KPC for Codburn Road Sidewalk Construction Inspection, Agenda Item Number 2195. Our next item is the approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Leader Gov. to provide comprehensive management and leadership training for all staff, Agenda Item Number 2196. Our final item is an approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Voya Retirement Insurance, an annuity company to provide investment services and administration related to the city's 401 and 457 plans, Agenda Item Number 2197.
Okay, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria, with a second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and still no audio from Councilmember Morgan, is that correct? Okay.
Sounds like he's trying, but I don't think his microphone's working. I can see that he's unmuted himself, but.
All right, so that's unanimous.
He said aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, next, we'll move on to reports and presentations.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. We had one comment that was emailed, and I believe he wanted it read into the record. Did we have that email from Mr. Sawyer?
I don't have that email.
Yeah, I've seen, I saw the email.
It was, I believe it was emailed out to all the elected officials.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if that, I guess he would have pointed out on general public comment, is that?
I believe so. I think I have it here, if you give me a moment. Do you want me to read it into the record?
Yeah, if that's, if that's all right, Ken.
He says, "My name is Scott Sawyer, and I reside at 787 Quarter Path Lane in Milton, Georgia. I viewed last week's city council work session meeting on the former Milton Country Club trail plan and wanted to provide the following comments. The boardwalk and trail adjacent to the large park pond as proposed by the consultant Kim Lee Horn and adopted by the city council in August 2019 is the best location for a trail and should be constructed as proposed. The boardwalk and trail through the trees and wetlands near the pond will provide walkers and hikers with a unique opportunity to experience the park's nature and ecosystem up close and in person. The trail will also provide shade for the hikers and an engaging way to complete the loop around the pond. I believe the landscape designers recommended this location for these reasons. If the boardwalk cannot be constructed, the alternative two trail proposed by the neighbors is the next best option. This proposed trail passes through the existing wetlands cart path and runs adjacent to the tree line to circle the pond. This trail is the second best location for three reasons. One, the trail will preserve the large meadow as it doesn't cut across the open field to the other side of the meadow. Two, it will provide hikers with a new wider gravel walking trail instead of a small crumbling golf cart paths. Three, the location adjacent to the tree line keeps hikers away from the Quarter Path Lane homes and ensures the privacy and security of park visitors and homeowners. The alternative one trail proposed by the city is the least desirable trail due to the following reasons. One, the trail is closer to Quarter Path Lane homes and will require significant city and homeowner screening to provide privacy and security to hikers and neighbors. Two, a significant portion of the old, narrow, and broken golf cart paths will be reused for this trail. Three, while alternative one is trail is no longer, is longer, it is only 0.2 miles longer than boardwalk and alternative two trails. Thank you for considering these comments. Our understanding, as stated in last week's work session, is that no votes were taken by the council to change the park master plan, and the meeting was designed for the city and community to explore trail options." That's it.
All right, thank you. So, if our next reports and presentations?
Our first report and presentation is the oath at the office by Mayor Lockwood to new firefighters Timothy Brown and Mary Glasgow, presented by Mayor Lockwood.
Okay, and I want to, before we do this oath, I want to take an opportunity to thank our fire department and those in, in uniform, as well as all of our public safety, but you guys really had to work hard this weekend. We had three separate fires, and I appreciate you guys being there. Unfortunately, no one was hurt, and you protected lives and protected the adjacent property. So, thank you guys for being there and keeping us safe.
With that being said, we are introducing two new firefighters to the City of Milton Fire Rescue Department, and after this weekend, it's good to have some fresh young blood coming into the department because our folks will bore out after this past weekend, so, and they did do a great job, all, all the agencies involved, our neighbors, our police department, our fire department, our EMS service, all did a great job, so we appreciate everybody. This evening, I want to introduce two new firefighters, Timothy Brown. He has spent five years in the Marine Corps. He was stationed at Kings Bay after completing high school. He earned his Good Conduct Medal as well as a Meritorious Unit Commendation. Timothy is a third generation firefighter. Since his departure from the Marine Corps, he has completed fire school through Barry University, as well as his EMT. He's very eager to join our department and continue the legacy that his family has started in the fire service. Additionally, I'd like to introduce Mary Glasgow. Mary grew up in Bay County, Florida, where she attended Gulf Coast State College, majoring in civil engineering. Mary is coming to us from AMR Ambulance Service, where she has worked as a paramedic for three years. She has received a paramedic certification through Faithful Guardian in 2019. Mary earned her EMT certifications through Grady EMS Academy in 2017. Mary has a family background in firefighting. Her mother was a firefighter/paramedic in Bay County, Florida, and she's excited to follow in her mother's footsteps, and as always, and she's interested in helping people. So, I'd like to introduce to you Tim Brown and Mary Glasgow. And Mayor, will you be honored if you would give them the oath of office?
I've got your laces, I'd love to shake your hand. At different times. So, if you would state your name, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Timothy Brown.
Mary Glasgow.
Swear and affirm.
Swear and affirm.
That I am qualified to hold the position.
That I'm qualified to hold the position.
A firefighter to which I'm appointed.
A firefighter to which I'm appointed.
And for so long as I'm employed with the City of Milton.
And for so long as I'm employed by the City of Milton.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Georgia.
And the Constitution of the State of Georgia.
And I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties.
I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties.
Of my position.
Of my position.
Conscientiously.
Conscientiously.
And without malice.
And without malice.
Or partiality.
Or partiality.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear and affirm.
I further swear and affirm.
To obey.
To obey.
To adhere to.
To adhere to.
To uphold and to enforce the laws of the United States of America.
To uphold and enforce the laws of the United States of America.
The State of Georgia.
The State of Georgia.
And of the City of Milton.
And of the City of Milton.
At all times.
At all times.
I further swear and affirm.
I further swear and affirm.
That I, that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the City of Milton.
And allegiance to the City of Milton.
And the officers appointed over me.
And the officers appointed over me.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
With that, I want to welcome you, congratulate you, and welcome you to the City of Milton. We sincerely appreciate everything that you've done to get here and everything that you'll be doing to keep our citizens and ourselves safe, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you mind signing?
That's all right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir, too. Thank you, sir.
Is spicy water?
Yes. Thank you. And Tim, if you would please sign, print your name and sign.
(laughing).
Mayor, Council, Mary Brown, Mary and Tim, they're going to be pinned, Mary's going to be pinned by Chelsea McDonald, her best friend and one of our firefighter/paramedics, and the 2019 Firefighter of the Year. And Tim's going to be pinned by his dad and his wife, and Tim's dad is a retired firefighter from South Florida.
(laughing). (inaudible). Yeah, would you mind taking a picture of you? And if we can get one more picture.
But again, a big thank you, thank you, sir, for being here with your son. Big shout out to Mary and Timothy, thank you, and welcome to Milton. Proud to have you. Okay, Tammy, if you'll please call the next item.
Our next item is the discussion of the architectural design for fire station number 42, Chief Edgar.
I didn't get far, did I? Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead and see if you can advance it.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council. What we're talking tonight, and what I'd like to discuss with you, is the Station 42 project. As you know, Station 42 was, is located on Thompson Road, and it was built in the 1970s with Fulton County as a volunteer station, and it has long exceeded his lifespan. Fulton County had planned on rebuilding that station, replacing and rebuilding in the 90s. That didn't take place, and here we are in 2020, and we still occupy that station with an engine company and a rescue company, a minimum staffing of five people, sometimes we have six there, in a 37 square, 3,700 square foot building. And if you've been by that building, you can tell that it has, it's ready to go, it's ready to be replaced. Here's the property lines for it, you can see where the building sits, it's on a very small plot, and has the AT&amp;T tower or the cell tower to the rear of that. What our future plan here is that Station 44 is scheduled to open in September of 2020. Station 42, once that station opens, Station 42 personnel and apparatus, the rescue and the engine, would relocate to Station 44. At that point, we would go ahead and decommission Station 42 and begin the terremaine process and then replace that. The goal is to build a new state-of-the-art 50-year building, similar to what we have done here with Station 44, and I'm very excited about that building and the work that's been done there. Bob Bishimi has done an outstanding job, and for me to be able to work with him on that project, it's, what a learning experience it has been for me. The design of the new building would be approximately 7,000 square feet, it'll be a two-bay, single-story station, and it will house eight firefighters. So, we're planning for growth in the future for that, for that particular structure, and the, the design of that will fit the characteristics and blend into that residential community where that station sits today. The RFQ process went out for an architectural design firm, bids were submitted, and Croft was selected by a committee of city staff as well as firefighter staff. We negotiated an agreement, and the contract gave us two options. The first option was a lead option at just over $213,000 for architectural design, and a, without a lead certification, it was almost $176,000. So, it's just less than $38,000 difference, just for an architectural design for a lead project versus a non-lead project. The original budget for, did not take in for consideration a lead project. The design will include the sustainable elements, similar to what we've already done in Station 44. Most lead items are built into current building codes, which we've also been implementing at the Station 44, and depending on the level of lead and what elements, the cost can vary up to 20%, and that's an overall project cost, that's not just architectural design. So, we estimate the project to cost about $4 million, and then with a 20% increase on top of that, you can see that we're about an $800,000 estimate on that project. Well, let me back up here. With that additional cost, with that additional cost, the demolition of that particular building, Station 42 where it exists today, the demolition also has to follow lead certification requirements, such as you have to separate the debris. Some has to go to the landfill, some has to go to recycling, so that's an additional cost on top of that. If the decision is to move forward with the lead project, we would have to add the funds to that project or cut something out of the project in order to meet the, meet the budget. We've made some great strides in firefighter safety with, with everything that we've done, everything you've supported us on, including the firefighter cancer initiative, the exhaust extractors we put in the stations, the new station alerting, which it has the increased or the volume control where it's not startling the firefighters. So, all of those things have gone into the health and safety of the, of the station, and with the, with the lead project, I'm afraid that something's going to have to be cut out, or we're going to have to find additional funding. And the last thing I would like to see is anything that would jeopardize firefighter safety in the fire stations. Some of the appliances that we put in the Station 44, we did not go with commercial-grade stuff. We went ahead with high-efficiency appliances that we can replace. We went ahead with high-efficiency appliances that we can replace easily. We've bought all our appliances from, um, from our local stores such as Lowe's and Home Depot. They've supported us in this project. So, if one of those things, you know, reach their life expectancy, we can easily just go to those stores and purchase new, new items and not have to go to a commercial side of that. The other thing is the, um, the technology that goes into the lead. And trust me, I am speaking outside of my wheelhouse here on lead. And, and I've got Bob Ashimmy here who's supported me on this and helped me and educated me on this, is that the technology that goes into these lead projects can cost us more in maintenance years down the road. Right now, our staff takes care of all our stations. We, we handle everything in our fire stations now. And I'm afraid that if we go beyond that and get too technical, we're going to have to go to outside sources for maintenance. So, um, again, if you can see Station Forty-four and when you have an opportunity to get in there, I think you'll really be impressed. I think you'll see that we have done everything we can to build a sustainable station and something that will meet the lead requirements, but not necessarily get the scorecard for it and have that plaque on the wall. So, I will leave it at that. I've got, if you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. If they're lead-directed questions, I would ask that Bob come up and help me out with those. Thank you.
I'll just make a comment. Um, in my experience and in the buildings we've done in the past, including City Hall, you're correct in, in the cost differences. If we were to have a, quote, "lead-certified" building, so all your points are valid. The reality is, we can, uh, I'm in favor of building a building that's not lead-certified, but we can spend the money and do the things right that basically we put a lot of the things in that are included in a lead-certified building, but just not to the, the, the point that, that we're discussing. So, I'll open up. Any questions on that, Paul?
Could I ask, Carol?
Yeah, Carol.
Good, Carol.
Go ahead.
I am, um, these days not a fan of lead. And I think that there are enough economy and scale and technological savvy to accomplish a number of lead initiatives without the lead certification. And some of the leads that are kind of ridiculous. So, I'm in favor of proceeding without the lead certification. That pass.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Paul.
Thank you.
Chief, are there any consequences for not being a lead-certified building? There's no penalty, there's no other governmental agency overlooking us to say you have to have something or there's a cost associated with it?
I think that one might fall right outside my wheelhouse, sir. Um, I would ask that Bob maybe, um, if he could help me with that particular question. I, I'm not familiar with the government...
Yeah, I don't think there are, but I just wanted to make sure.
We get graded as a city on certain categories. I forget if it's the Green City Initiative or which one it is, where lead certification gets us extra points, but it doesn't preclude us from gaining the recognition on that.
There's no financial forfeiture, there's no, um, as long as we're, and I'm chief to, Forty-four's spectacular. And, uh, while I haven't had a chance to be inside, I've watched the process. And if, if that is a non-lead-certified building and that's the outcome, I'm very much in favor of that.
And, and we argue with Milton Country Club where the clubhouse is pursuing lead certification. So, that will help us on that Green Communities' scorecard.
Anybody else? Okay, all right. Um, I think you have the direction.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
All right, Tammy, if you'll please call the next item.
Our third and final reports and presentation item is discussion of concept for Freemanville Road at Birmingham Road intersection improvement. Mr. Robert Drury. And Mayor, we do have two public comments for this item.
You know, Mr. Drury, yeah, Robert, I'd almost rather take public comment first if we can on that.
Okay.
That way, when Robert makes his presentation, maybe he can address any of those items.
Thank you. I can first, uh, like to call Ms. Tenera DeJergis. And we'll give... For the reports and presentation for the roundabout.
Hi, I'm sorry, I thought this was going to be the presentation first. So, I wanted to comment on what's in the presentation.
Do you mind just naming the address for the record?
Tamara DeJergis, fourteen twenty-five Birmingham Road. Sorry.
For the record.
Should know if I know. Okay. So, um, I did want to, um, talk about the plan. I know that this came up in January and it's come up for the last seven years. Um, I want to thank you for taking it back to rework it some more. And I do have a few concerns about it still, um, when you guys see this. Um, one is that the driveway on Freemanville, when you look at the presentation on, on what's proposed, um, you'll see that the merge lanes come out right at my driveway. Um, and that's going to make it, um, very difficult to make a left-hand turn. And the solution that was given to me was, well, why don't you go through the roundabout? Well, uh, in the evenings, Birmingham Road is backed up from Birmingham Highway, sometimes all the way back to Hopewell Road. So, that's not really a viable solution. Um, so, that, that is one concern. And the other thing is, is that there are two lanes coming, what you'll see in the presentation, and it's probably about a hundred and fifty-ish feet. I don't know, Robert, do you want to, do you, is that about how far it is? Okay, so, basically, there are already speed issues on both Birmingham Road and Freemanville. So, they're going to be able to do a nice little slingshot and becoming down. And then they'll, they will pick up a lot of speed, um, right where the driveway comes out. So, no matter what, that's going to be a pretty big issue, um, I would think. And when I asked about, um, is speed going to be addressed, the answer was no. That it's, it's a roundabout. It's, there's not going to be anything there to address the speed approaching the roundabout. Um, on, um, uh, also on northbound traffic on Freemanville backs up in the evenings and that goes all the way past that curve, so probably down about a half mile. Um, so, trying to get out to even turn right or, or left, that will also be difficult because it's, you know, it's going to be essentially gridlocked, particularly until the next intersection at Birmingham Road and Birmingham Highway is addressed. Um, I think it could create a pretty good choke point right in front of my house. Um, and so, I'm concerned about the access there. Um, and switching over to the driveway on Birmingham Road, this is the driveway that I take my horse trailer in and out of, um, as well as receive deliveries of feed, hay, y-you name it. So, it's large trailers that have to come in and out of there. And that, um, the driveway there is, I believe, what, about a hundred feet from the... Okay, uh, it's, it's, it's right around a hundred feet. Okay, and again, they're going to be, cars are going to be coming around a blind corner. It's also a school bus stop. Um, cars pick up a lot of speed coming around that corner with the stop sign. I can't imagine what that's going to be coming around it. And so, and then again, turning left out of there with a horse trailer, there, there are medians there and that's going to be difficult going either way, both with the speed coming across there. Uh, you know, either direction's going to be difficult. Um, so, this is, um, this is going to impact the ability to use my property as it's been used, both by me, the prior owner, and, you know, going way back, um, you know, probably at least a hundred years. Um, this is inverse condemnation. Um, I also wanted to find out what the plan is for the trees and the shrubs because right now I have trees and shrubs planted all the way around that. Um, one for privacy because that intersection over the last ten years has gotten much louder. Um, but also, um, it's privacy. And then the other thing is, is to protect my fence because people get in accidents at that intersection quite a lot. Um, some of them are reported, some of them are not reported because I've come out and found my fence down before I started putting the trees up there so that they can at least hit the trees and not my fence. Um, because I don't want my livestock to get out. Thankfully, my horses haven't been the ones that have gotten out, but I take a lot of measures to make sure that happens. Um, there's also a drainage ditch along Freemanville Road. That is, um, I'm concerned about flooding because that wasn't taken into account into the plan. Um, and so, it could, and my house is located very close to the intersection. Um, I'd like to understand the noise buffers. It's still, the plan that's in the presentation that was sent out today is still using an old plat map. And I noticed that other owners had not, um, commented. Um, a couple of them are incorrect. It doesn't even list the City of Milton as owning the property across the street from me. Um, I do need, um, so, on, on the driveways, I, I need some help with that, understanding some more of that as well as, as well as buffering them, like putting, um, I don't know what it's called, an apron, whatever, so that they're protected, um, a little bit. Um, the other thing that I wanted to be sure was addressed is the construction crews. In May of two thousand nineteen, an employee of a contractor hired by the City of Milton um, came onto my property, trespassed, um, relieved himself on my property and then proceeded to chase me. And he was a, um, it was later...
Mayor, that's fine, we've exceeded the five minutes. I'm so sorry, that was what that was. Do you want to extend for the record?
I'll give you a little more time to wrap it up.
Um, this is my last point.
Yeah, sure.
It's the, um, you know, this person chased me. The city, the city hired this contractor who hired this employee and this employee had an assault record. I have a minor child on the property and I want to be sure that appropriate supervision measures are taken. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And then we have another public comment. Is that correct?
Our, do our next public comment is from Ms. Judy Birds.
And just while we're waiting, um, and I know you mentioned, um, presentation versus public comment. Sometimes we'll allow public comment first because in that way, when it's presented, sometimes they can address some of the concerns, so.
Judy Birds, one-one-six-five Brain Drive, Milton, Georgia. I live about a half a mile from this intersection. I am very concerned that this presentation was not included in the packet for tonight's meeting. Um, Georgia has very clear sunshine laws to assure that citizens have access to information. And I believe that Milton should be transparent in its dealings with its citizens. I travel through, through this intersection many times each week in normal time, so have kept a vested interest in it, as has many of my neighbors. This particular topic had previous wish, issues with how it was handled in front of council and some of the processes. So, I would have thought, care had been taken to get this information to its citizens with the packet last Friday so I didn't have to spend two spins through a thousand ninety-five pages trying to find it. The presentation link was published on Facebook around noon today after citizens' request to receive the information. I've only had a short time to review the schematics but offer the following points. We have very few small horse farms remaining in Milton and care should be taken to preserve them. I am pleased that the proposed design has shifted west and, I think, shrank the size of the roundabout to remedy the non-conforming lot that would have occurred in the interim design that was, um, mishandled by the city, in my opinion, the interim design. Um, a horse farm needs to be able to transport its horses. The new design needs to assure that a horse trailer can enter and exit the property. As well as Tamara mentioned, feed trucks, et cetera. It's a farm. The plan indicates that the city will be grading along several property lines plus increase the amount of impervious service, surfaces. A hydrology study and drainage plan needs to be included in the next stages. Care needs to be taken that homes, pastures, trees, and historic structures are not damaged by the change in water flow. The grading will clear several existing natural buffers on multiple lots. The city will need to replace these buffers as part of the project, hopefully consistent with some of the discussion on the buffers for the residents along the former Milton Country Club. And in closing, the construction also has to be coordinated with the Birmingham Crosswords improvements. That discussion point was made, I think, by me almost four, five, six years ago when this topic first came up. So, I think there's still a lot of work to be done. I think we still have to make sure that citizens are allowed a chance to review information prior to the meeting so that we can provide informed input. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the other final, or any other public comment? Okay.
Yes. For this item.
Ken, while we're waiting here, would you mind just clarifying? I know, you know, typically we, the staff will publish anything on our agenda prior to the meeting and whatnot, but on reports and presentations, a lot of times, that's to bring forward to the council kind of a first look and to discuss. It's certainly not anything we're voting on, it'll come back later. Is there any other process, you know, do you have any comments on that? If we should do something different?
I listened to the speaker and obviously took, took note of that. I will say, you know, from a purely technical position, the Open Meetings Act doesn't even talk about the packet. The Open Meetings Act talks about minutes and agendas and notices. Um, there's some governments in Georgia that don't have a packet at all. Uh, so, the, the point is, is to make sure that we advise citizens and give them reasonable notice of what the government's going to talk about. Milton and a lot of the metro jurisdictions go beyond that and make sure the citizens have, um, the same documentation that the council does. Reports and presentations is different. It's tended to be more of an informal update. You don't take official action, you don't vote after reports and presentations. So, I, I certainly can see a difference between that and a bona fide agenda item. So, I mean, I'm comfortable from an Open Meetings Act standpoint. And I will say for the record as well, I think Milton does a pretty good job with respect to giving citizens the backup for most agenda items.
Okay, and I certainly understand the, the comments brought up and whatnot. But again, this is coming to us so that, you know, just to us now too, so that we can all kind of digest it and work for it through the future. So, before we, before it comes before us officially, that we would take a vote on it or whatnot.
Appreciate the time to make this presentation and...
Click on the screen with the mouse.
Oh. There's a four, yeah. Where's the mouse? Oh, there it is. There you go. So, just click the mouse.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, David. Um, what I'm going to present to you is the conceptual layout for the intersection of Freemanville and Birmingham has been discussed in the public comment. Uh, first, a little bit of background, just to kind of refresh your memories. Uh, this, this intersection was discussed combined with the Providence and Freemanville intersection back in two thousand fourteen, where it was a combined concept study and some survey work done back then. Um, and I think it was agreed at that time that a roundabout would be the most appropriate use of this intersection. In May of two thousand nineteen, the city hired Wolverton to, uh, prepare a conceptual design and, and the design work for this particular intersection. And in January of this year, um, the council did award a task order to BM&amp;K for, to oversee the design work and oversee the, uh, right-of-way, right-of-way acquisition. And it was at that meeting, there was a lot of discussion about revisiting the, uh, concept layout. So, because of that meeting, we did enter a change order with Wolverton to look at the conceptual layout and they did that. That was, change order was approved in April of this year. So, the Wolverton Associates has proposed a conceptual layout. And, uh, we did invite, there are three affected property owners that we did invite to meet one-on-one to go over the conceptual plan. And of those three, uh, only one responded. And of those three, only one responded, and of course, that was Ms. DeJuris. And staff met her out there, staff and the consultant, and she did provide a lot of comments, and venture to say probably all these comments was probably discussed at that meeting. There are impacts to her property, no doubt. There are impacts to all three, all four of those parcels. And I know in this conceptual plan stage, it is kind of early to kind of determine particularly the drainage, that that has not been designed. We don't know the grades, the roads approaching, so it's too early to say what the drainage is going to look like until they get into the design work. She did mention the speed. I don't know if that came up in the previous meeting with her on site, but I do know that as typical with roundabouts, the approach speed will be downsized to 25 when you're approaching the, the roundabout and as you exit the roundabout. Then we were sent letters out advising those three affected property owners that we would be meeting and discussing this today. So what you have in front of you is an overlay. The shaded roundabout is the, the latest concept that was presented, and then the colored roundabout is what's been revised. And it is a significant shift, as much as practical, to the west and southwest a little bit as that, as well. And we are utilizing as much as we can of the city-owned property. This particular layout, it does avoid some of the significant utilities. We do have a, a telephone compound down the southeast side of Freemanville Road, as you're familiar with, and it, you know, relocating that would be just significant. And then the northwest quadrant of undeveloped, currently undeveloped, we understand there is a Fulton County water that ties into their tower. So when you lay out these designs, you do take into consideration, you know, the engineering entry angles. As you know, when you approach a roundabout, you do want some variation in the angle to slow the traffic down, but you, you don't want too much of an angle either because it becomes an unsafe movement. Also, taking, engineering taking into consideration the approach and departure speeds, as I mentioned. Also, just want to quickly reference, on the northwest side, there is a, a large buffer of evergreens, and some of those will have to be removed. And I know when they meet with that property owner, there'll be discussions about either reestablishing that buffer or compensating. So that is the comparison of the two layouts, and this is where we landed on the current conceptual layout. What I really want you to focus on is, is the curb lines and the asphalt, that's the shaded area. Of course, the medians as well. Of course, they're, they're just drawn in for discussion purposes, but I really want you to focus on those aspects. We know, as we get into design work, we'll look at what the acquisition looks like. Right now, it appears that there's going to be right-of-way acquisition on two of the four parcels, and perhaps some easement or slope access, slope easements on the other two parcels as well, so it's just too early to say. So I don't really want you to focus on what the easements look like because we don't really know at this time until we get into the design work. But that is the conceptual layout, and it, it is a nice balance between engineering and, and the properties that we have to deal with. So where do we go from here? The next steps would be, assuming there's no design considerations, to the conceptual layout. We'll advise Wolverton, our consultant, to proceed with the design work, and it may take four months, five months for them to actually get something on paper that we can actually meet with the residents, the owners, and determine what kind of easements or what kind of right-of-way has to be acquired. And then once that's resolved, we are hoping we can be out and have this out construction sometime before the next, within the next 12 months. So that's where we are with the conceptual. Again, I, this is just a conceptual. We haven't done any engineering design work yet until we get into the, like I said, just the grades and the drainage. So I'm available for any questions.
Let me open up questions. Anybody have any? Laura?
Um, could, Robert, could you go back to the overlay of the old and new?
Let me see.
I didn't get all that.
There it is.
Yes, thank you. So as we shift that over, I'm, I'm just trying to get a feel for, you know, accommodating on the city-owned property, you know, as far as how many feet, just to try to quantify that, which, you know, it's city-owned, but it still is in, in the citizen's digestive thing, so I appreciate that we've done that and accommodated some of the property owners. But do we have a feel for how much has shifted on to the city property?
No, we really don't. It is significant. It's obviously the largest portion is going to be on the city-owned property, particularly the acquisition. And I was informed this afternoon that, you know, because this is green space, it will have to be reimbursed, whatever that fair market value is, would be reimbursed into the Green Space Fund.
Okay, so we'll buy it back and then reimburse ourselves? Okay, that's fair. My other comment is the northwest property, the, the evergreens that are there, so that shifts and that impacts.
It does.
I know that they may not have come tonight or aren't, but that is also, that's a horse farm, as I recall, as well. So we've got two important farms on that corner and a nice estate. So I, my comment is appreciate the adjustment, and think we're trying to, you know, minimize the impact as best we can. And it'll be interesting as we move into the design stage. I had a, I had a couple of comments. People wanted to make sure, since it's in our very rural area, that it's going to be designed for horse trailers to easily maneuver. Is that a good assumption?
Yes, those radius will have to be accommodated, for sure. I don't know what they're going to be designed at distance-wise, but I know we'll put templates on them for that.
Okay, because people, you know, there's many, many farms in that area, and they need to be able to safely get around without going through the middle of it with big rigs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Paul?
Thanks, Joe. Just in keeping with Laura's comment, Robert, I'm assuming as we're assessing for the length and issues presented by horse trailers, we would give that same consideration to a public's truck or a Crower truck or a moving van going through there.
That's correct.
It's probably too early to have an answer to this, but is the design, can it be likened to anything else that we've seen in terms of how the roundabout itself would be treated? Would it be anything like, like, for example, the, the one at Providence and 370, no, Providence and?
372.
372. It's a significantly larger-
It is.
-roundabout than this. So the, the hard surface that allows the larger vehicles to process through there is probably smaller than you compare that to the new roundabout at Freemanville and Providence. It's significantly smaller, there's more hard surface, so the trailers actually go up onto the hard surface. Do you imagine it being more like the Freemanville example that's out there today?
I haven't put any overlays on it, or the other two that you mentioned, but I do suspect it's probably going to be likened to the Freemanville-Providence.
Okay.
That is a mountable curb, and that is designed for trailers and trucks to mount that curb in the center island. And it's a perfectly acceptable maneuver, to be honest with you.
Yeah. And in that design that we've experienced at Freemanville, I want to address some of the concerns that were brought up this evening about traffic speeds in the roundabout. Our typical traffic posting is 25 miles an hour at all of our roundabouts, is that correct?
That's, I believe, I believe that's for all of them, yes, sir. I don't know about 372, I'm not sure about that one.
Are you, are we aware of any traffic violations or are citations being issued for excessive speed in our roundabouts?
I'm sorry, I'm not deliver, I don't know, I'm sorry.
But at 25 miles an hour and the, and the smaller of those is actually probably conducive to a, a lower speed, the smaller the, the roundabout, you really have to be more careful because the, the cars that are coming through have less distance to travel before you're upon one another. I would hope that that consideration would address some of the traffic speed issues. I guess my last question is, as we've experienced the roundabout introductions in all the different locations we've had, every one of those, when they were, prior to their introduction, had a traffic backup issue. And in your assessment of the, the introduction of those, are we experiencing any backups at any of those at this point? Now, I know in this case in particular, there's an anomaly in the fact that just down the road, we have got Birmingham and Birmingham, that's going to be addressed in the future. But at the other ones, have we experienced relief from the backups?
Evidence out here at Mayfield and Heritage, that's, that's going to be a significant, once school gets back in session too, I think you'll see some significant improvements there as well.
Yeah. Okay, so that's, it sounds like most of the concerns can be addressed, and, and those that have not been addressed will be addressed during the engineering phases.
That's correct.
Great, thanks, Robert.
Okay, anybody else? It's hard to follow, being very thorough. I mean, I'll just make a comment. I mean, basically, if you look at the overlay of the two, it has certainly been adjusted measurably for existing property owners. In fact, you know, almost to the detriment of the public, you know, with the city, the public property, so. And I think that's a good point, too, to realize, as we were discussing, this is a concept. It's not written in stone. Moving forward, as you're saying, it's got to be engineered, so we don't know what drainage, we don't know what exact dimensions and driveways are, and that it will also be meetings with the property owners and whatnot, working together with them, and, you know, basically, whether that stuff is, you know, for the experts to work out, you know, along with the property owners and whatnot, as you, as you engineer and get more details, correct?
That's correct. That's an excellent point, because bringing these comments up now is the right time. Not do it after we get into design.
Right, so that they can be aware that those, and, and, you know, things may have to change, it may not be exactly like this, so. And at, at some point, this will, will come back for approval, but it'll be down the road a ways.
Yes, it'll come back to the council as a bid.
But there, there will be time for, obviously, if, if you've got engineers going, then they're also going to meet with affected property owners and, you know, hopefully can alleviate most of the concerns.
That's the idea, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Rick or Carol, do you have any comments?
I'd be glad, thank you.
Okay.
I believe.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if our city clerk can please sound the first presentation items.
Our first item is consideration of U-20-01/VC-20-01, located at 12900 Arnold Mill Road by Ebenezer United Methodist Church, to request a use permit, Section 64-1804, to construct a 23,000 square foot activity center on the existing church property, approximately 5,088 square feet, for a total of 28,088 square feet on 6.61 acres, to request a two-part concurrent variance to, one, allow parking in front of a building, Section 64-1143, and to reduce required parking. Agenda item number 20198. Our second and final first presentation item is consideration of ZM-20-03, located at 13210 Bethany Road, zoned R2, single-family residential by Scott Big Sky Stables LLC. Chris Hyvley requesting to modify Condition 2 of RZ-72-222, to reduce the front building setback from 150 feet to 100 feet from Bethany Road to conform to existing setbacks in this particular area of Bethany Road. Agenda item number 20199.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion on these first presentation items for approval?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve first presentation as read.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley for approval with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to our public hearing. Judy, if you'll please call the next item.
First item is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Rugaroo Inc., doing business as Cans Tequila, 12635 Crab Apple Road, Suite 320, Milton, Georgia, 30004. Agenda item number 20200.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening you have before you an alcohol beverage license application for Cans Tequila. This is a simple change of ownership. They are applying for wine, malt beverage, and distilled spirits consumption on premises. They are in compliance with all the regulations, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, are there any questions on that?
Are they operating today? Is there a temp, is there a temporary permit for them to be pouring?
Yes, we have a temporary application process, and I believe they are on with this time.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Do any public comment on?
Not on the side, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing on that. Is there any other questions? If not, I'll open up for a motion on this item.
Mayor, I approve that we approve agenda item number 20-200.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any items under our zoning and agenda, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Tammy Field, please read the item.
The first item is consideration of an ordinance to amend in Milton tree canopy conservation ordinance to provide a time extension on the ability to use the density-based tree conservation ordinance or the canopy-based tree conservation ordinance in the city code. Agenda item number 2183, Mr. Prag Agawal.
Mayor and City Council members, today I am in front of you to present you the amendment to the tree conservation ordinance that will allow the time extension on the ability to use either the density-based tree conservation ordinance or the canopy-based tree conservation ordinance. The staff is requesting that the time should be extended from July 31, 2020, to November 30, 2020. So we are requesting an extension of four months. As we know, the staff is working to update the tree conservation ordinance, and we are on the final stretches. We gave a presentation to the city council on June 15, 2020, and this item will again be in front of the city council on August 3. So this extension will, will give, will give us additional of four months, and we are hoping that the city council will approve the new tree conservation ordinance in the month of August, and then in the next two months, it will give us some time for public outreach and education to the Milton residents.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll open up for motion. Paul?
Actually, I'd just like to revisit a Prag conversation that, that we've had last Friday. There were a couple of remaining open issues that, that I had asked last time we met about this for a deferral, to have a chance to discuss it and come back to this meeting with recommendations. And we appreciate the fact that you are giving this careful consideration. There are still three remaining, three open items that I think a number of council and maybe even the mayor has had follow-up meetings and discussions with you on. And I walked out of the meeting the other day with the impression that there was maybe more consensus than, than there actually might be. So I had a chance to follow up with some of the other council members in one-on-one conversation. It sounds like maybe there's some more discussion that needs to be had on those, at least two out of the three. If you think about the, the first one that we talked about, or not necessarily in the order that we talked about them, but the three items, the first of those is the consideration of the tree caliber, whose size, and there was some discussion about there being a compromise from one size to another. It doesn't sound like there's as much consensus as there might have been, so I look forward to further discussion on that one. I'm concerned that the understory trees are not going to be protected like we thought they would be. Okay. My personal experience was just working in my yard this weekend and realizing, as I was looking at some of my dogwoods, that my house is 20 years old, and so those trees were planted about the same time of- were planted about the same time of the construction of my home. And I'm concerned that some of those are only in the eight-to-10-inch range now, and as a part of an understory, the way the discussion we had the other day went, it was about the fact that they wouldn't really be considered as a part of the canopy, which I certainly understand from a measurement standpoint. But I'm just so afraid that as we look at future development, the trees like that, that bring beauty and value to a homestead, aren't as protected as we might have thought they were. So I'd like to give some additional consideration to that. The second, which is an easy one, which was we're looking for some consideration to the sizes of lots and the ability to incentivize larger lots. It appears there is more consensus than...there is consensus on that, that we moved in the right direction on that one. The third is the timeline to review the tree canopy. We'd talked about two different numbers in particular, not to exceed three years from one measurement to the next, and the other one settling at five years. And again, I walked out of the meeting thinking that there was stronger consensus than what I've since discovered in my own follow-up conversations to make sure I could be on the same page and support the council members that had other meetings with you guys. And I just discovered that it doesn't appear to be the same consensus that we thought there might be. So I would just encourage another, some additional discussion on that item as well. I'm concerned in particular, Prag, that as we look at the extraordinary things that are happening in our world today, we know that two things appear to be...one thing, but two examples as to how it's happening, that there appears to be some urban flight going on. I think that makes sense, that people who are stacked on top of each other in a higher concentration of residents are just choosing to step away from that for a more urban...or sorry, more rural setting. And the second part of that is with the civil unrest that's happening around our country today. There is a lot of that happening, and we don't know when that will come to an end. So I think people are choosing to leave the city. There's a lot of pressure for those folks to find places out here. And the example that I would give for that is that on a social media post recently, there was a realtor that said that she had five immediate-ready buyers who were looking to purchase in the Milton area in our school systems at 1.3 to 1.8 million. And that's extraordinary, to have five buyers in that price range. And that, although I don't have proof of this particular comment that I'm about to make, it appears that that would be probably an urban, you know, higher-cost residence that's being sold that gives them the available cash to come out here and look at that. So I think there's going to be some development pressure that will come from urban flight. Not knowing what that's going to look like, I'm just concerned that if we do look at a five-year review versus a not to exceed three years, at least give some consideration to maybe the first time or the second time being the three-year range. We see if there's any difference between those. We know that some of our past measurements have not produced extraordinary change. If that trend is proven to be the continued trend, I would have no problem to move to five years for the...after a time or two in the three-year measurement range. So I just offer that for additional consideration.
Feedback, Councilmember Moore. Very good feedback.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and I would just say, obviously, Councilmember Moore, too, feel free to keep discussing with staff and council, and that will...this come back the 3rd?
August 3.
The 3rd.
Certainly be prepared to discuss that before we load on it. Thanks, Joe.
Okay. I was asked for a mo...if there's no other comments, I'll open for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 20-183.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That sounds...that's unanimous. Tammy, so if you would please read the next item.
Our second item is the consideration to adopt the revised Milton Tree Canopy Conservation Ordinance and Tree Conservation Manual. Staff is recommending this item to be deferred until August 3, 2020. Agenda item number 20157, Mr. Prag Agawal.
Mayor and City Council members, on June 15, 2020, the staff made a presentation to the city council on the update of the tree conservation ordinance. After the presentation, the city council made a motion that this item should be deferred till July 20, 2020. So the staff is incorporating the feedback which we received from the city council. We also met a couple of city council members, and as Councilmember Moore mentioned, there is some more work to do. We have also given this tree conservation ordinance update to the city attorney's office, and they are also currently reviewing it. And we will be requesting that the city council should again be making...this item should be deferred to August 3, city council agenda.
Okay. Any questions on that? Any public comment?
Not on this one, yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion on this item?
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item 20-157.
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Moore, second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Prag. Tammy, if you'd please read the final unfinished business item.
Our final item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 4, Section 85, Farm Wineries of the Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia. Agenda item number 20182, Ms. Sarah Ladart. This item does have a two public comments.
Okay. I'll...again, I'll go ahead and...so, if the council, I'll ask for a public comment first, that way...
Okay. Our first...
Okay.
...comments. Our first comment will be from Pamela Jackson.
Pamela Jackson, 2105 Bethany Way. I was really hoping Sarah would go first, because I don't know what I'm here to talk about again, and you all already know that, so I'm here. I guess my understanding is that what you're voting on today is just the foreign wine being added to, and then the beer and spirits are being dealt with later? Okay. Well, my only comment is, I'm here, you know it's real important to me, and hopefully I'll get some clarification when Sarah speaks. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is going to be from Ms. Judy Birds.
And I will say this, if...again, I was trying to be helpful while allowing the public comment first, if either the public comment folks, you know, that have made public comment after the presentation, if they feel strongly about it, I'll ask the council if they'll allow them to speak again, if it's all right with the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Birds, 1165 Bream Drive, Milton, Georgia. I am so pleased we are getting Section 4 rewritten of the code. I think we are almost there. At the last Zoom meeting, I tried to say there's still one thing you need to fix. If everyone would look at 4-138 subsection 2, there is a reference there to an individual can only be served two drinks at a time, unless, of course, it's a sampling of beer. Usually, wine flights are three wines, small samples. So if you could please, while you're fixing 4 today, also fix 4-138 subsection 2 to add the word "after beer" or "wine," so we can have wine flights in Milton. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's all the public comments you had, right, Tammy?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Hold on one second, Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On both the June 1 and June 15 council meetings, I was given direction to go back and look at section...Chapter 4, Section 85, which is the farm winery section of our code, to allow not only Georgia wines, but wines from anywhere. I think the word that has been used is "foreign," but we didn't want to go, after speaking with the attorney, and then have to define what "foreign" means. So she came up, it's in front of council right now, this wording, which is "in wines produced shipped from outside of the state." So that means in America, in France, she can sell whatever she wants. The second thing that we addressed, council asked that we go and look at the use permit process, too, and we've started looking into that. That's a much longer process than just changing Chapter 4. This last sentence that the attorney added is "other sales of alcohol may be permitted by state law and city ordinance. In the event that council chooses to adopt a use permit in the future that would allow this, we don't have to touch this section again." And if you choose not to adopt that, this is fine here as well. And so it works either way with what council decides in the future. So tonight, this is to make all wine available at farm wineries.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that, Paul?
Sir, I'd just like to clarify that last part again. So if we accept the tag on of the last language with the...can you read that to me again, please?
"Other sales of alcohol may be as permitted by state law and city ordinances."
So that would include spirits?
So if we create a use permit that allows that, yes.
And so...
To clarify, this is not saying, open-ended, you can serve spirit.
Right. No, it's not.
You'd have to go through the permit process.
Yes. Right.
But it opens it up to consideration of spirits under Chapter 4.
Right. So should...when we go in and it's that...sorry, it makes sense in my head. Nobody else's. So in Chapter 64, if we add a use permit for farm wineries that they can sell beer and liquor, with this sentence, they can do it under Chapter 4 as well.
Does that preempt, then, the requirement we've had historically for a...if you're going to have spirits, where we've had a requirement for food sales? Does that preclude that, though?
That would be what I believe we're going to attempt to come in front of council at next month's work session. That will be one of the things that we consider as part of the use permit process. When we list out the things that a farm winery would have to do, that's something that we will discuss.
So the farm winery by this...pardon me, I'm just...this clarity is really going to be important, I think, at some point. So a farm winery by definition can include the sale by this change, wine, beer, and spirits?
Yep.
That has to come with the permitting process?
A special use permit, yes. That's not created yet.
Yep. I'm good then. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Based on our public comment, the flights and the...well, do you have any comments on that, or...
I discussed that with the attorney, and she didn't see that as a concern. I will clarify that with the attorney and get back with Ms. Birds about that.
Okay. Ken?
Well, there's no...I don't think there's any problem with it at all. It just can't be done tonight. It can't be done as part of this modification.
It can or cannot?
It cannot.
Okay.
That would be introducing a whole different verbiage that no one is...so, I mean, I get the idea that can be done maybe the next round of revisions, but just not this year.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, Carol or Rick?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. I'll open up for...and just to clarify, both people that spoke public comment, you okay with...
Yeah, I was still just confused, so...
Okay. All right. I'm sure we can...you're gonna have to sketch it backwards.
We can check, yes.
Okay. I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 20-182.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Longoria. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. If we'll move on to unfinished business, Tammy, if you'll please sound the first item.
You can mute the business?
I'm sorry. Did I say unfinished?
This is new business.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Consideration of an amended emergency ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia, under Section 3.18 of the Charter of the City of Milton, Georgia, under Section 3.18 of the Charter of the City of Milton, Georgia, to provide for the operation of the city of Milton, Georgia, during the public emergency known as the novel coronavirus disease 2019 global pandemic, to become effective upon adoption by the council to supersede the existing emergency ordinance to adopt the city's reopening plan and for other purposes. Agenda item number 20201, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I won't be approaching you this evening, but I do want to go over this very quickly with you. As you know, since about mid-March, when the world changed, as Councilmember Moore was discussing, we have been adopting variations on an emergency ordinance that's candidly provided by the rules of the city of Milton and your charter. Sitting in place certain powers, many of those powers, however, were either unexercised or have been superseded in totality by the governor, as you know, has taken a fairly strong position that the governor's rule is going to be the rule in the state of Georgia. Nonetheless, basically, the primary thing that our ordinance has done has been to try and lessen the burden of this on small business and to provide some of our businesses some relief with respect to when penalties and taxes, et cetera, are required. As you are also aware, the statewide declaration of emergency has in fact been extended. I believe right now it extends until August 11th, is the current iteration. We have attempted to match our ordinance with the statewide declaration for a variety of reasons, but mainly for the purposes of assisting these businesses that need a little bit of relief. As such, we are asking the council to go ahead and renew the emergency ordinance. This would in fact actually be retroactive. The actual date that this one expired would have been July 12th, so it will be retroactive, and it says that in the ordinance to make sure it covers that gap. It will expire at 11:59 PM on August 11th, unless, of course, it is extended again, which is probably likely. The reason these are done in 30-day increments is because that's what your rules require, they be done in 30-day increments. This will continue to allow the to-go malt beverages and wine alcohol with restaurants for consumption, all of the various things that you put in place, additional temporary signage for restaurants and retail, the deferring of payment of certain alcohol excise taxes and occupation taxes, et cetera. All of those, again, attempting just to help small business. Mr. Mayor, it's my recommendation that council, in fact, adopt this emergency ordinance to extend until August 11th, the emergency declaration under your charter.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments for Ken on this? Laura?
I should comment, and obviously, I support extending the emergency order. Just as a point of, you know, continuing in this environment, I'm wondering if we have any flexibility under this emergency order to adjust our meeting requirements. I know that we can't dial in if we are within the city, and I understand the reason for that, but as we move into, you know, winter and people worried about, you know, I don't know if I have a cold or if I have, you know, COVID-19, but we could all, you know, that situation could recur, and it's...I'm just wondering if we have any flexibility there to make that adjustment so that we can be extra vigilant with, you know, staying away if we need to, but also being able to participate.
Right. It's a great question, Councilmember Bentley. So with respect to the protocols for having an open meeting, regrettably, that's set by state law, which we can't waive. We have been taking advantage...of course, we took advantage with some enthusiasm for a while doing teleconference meetings. You recall that it would be on a computer screen. No one was physically assembled. The law does allow that, and we took advantage of it, and that's in situations of declared emergency. But of course, we also then had a reopening plan that this council has already adopted. that this council has already adopted. And that reopening plan, one of the things it did was to have these, you know, go back to real in-person meetings. If the council wants to revisit the notion of doing some additional teleconferencing or streaming meetings that aren't live, the law doesn't do a really good job of a hybrid approach. You know, you're either, you're either in person or there's an emergency such that you're remote. Doing a mix of that is not really something the law tolerates at this point. We have individuals that are teleconferencing today, but they're teleconferencing using one of their two for the year. Everybody understand what they're doing? They're doing something different. You're talking about a situation where you could teleconference, but be at home in the jurisdiction, because right now, to teleconference in the way that I think Councilmember Cookley or Councilmember Morag are doing, it either has to be based on health or it has to be because you're out of the jurisdiction. And those are available anytime. Forget about COVID, that's available anytime. I do know that I had some interaction, I believe Councilmember Morag may have achieved this. There may be an interest for the General Assembly in looking at this when they reconvene, providing governments even more flexibility on how they can meet. I do have one government right now that does its regular meetings live, but does its work sessions by complete teleconference, so they do not physically assemble for their work sessions. Again, trying to lessen the need for physical interaction, in-person interaction, but understanding the two, that regular meetings are where your public hearings occur, et cetera, and the citizens can come up and talk to you directly. So they've sort of done that approach, something you all could consider as well. So, Councilmember Bentley, I think it's a great issue, and it's something that COVID has certainly brought to light, is maybe needs some more refinement. This has sort of been new to all of us. This year has been charting new ground on almost every parliamentary or procedural thing I've ever seen since I've been practicing. And maybe the General Assembly will give us some more flexibility in 2021.
Ken? Anybody else? All right. I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Agenda Item 20-201 as presented.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Moore, with a second from Councilmember Longoria. For approval, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. And if, I mean, Tammy, if you would please sound the final business item, new business item.
Our final new business item is approval of a contract between the City of Milton and Croft and Associates PC for architectural design services for Fire Station Number 42. Agenda item number 2190. Chief Edgar.
Mayor and council, before you tonight are two contract options for design services for Fire Station 42 from Croft and Associates. Those two options are a LEED-certified building or a non-LEED-certified building. The two contract options have a price tag of $213,600 for a LEED-certified design or a non-LEED-certified design in the price tag of $175,900. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do you have any questions for Chief on this? No, we're discussing. Okay. So I'll open up for a motion.
So are we looking to provide direction? Because it sounded like there was an option in the discussion.
I think your direction is, you want a motion on either.
Yeah. If you would make a decision on which contract. They gave us two options. They gave us two contract options, one for the LEED and one for the non-LEED.
Okay. So we can just, all right. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Agenda Item number 20-201, choosing the option for a non-LEED-certified building.
Second.
I've got a motion for approval of the agenda item with a non-LEED contract, for better, lack of better words.
Right.
I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria and a second from Councilmember Moore on that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. We will move on to reports. I was going to go ahead and, we had some public comment earlier on our Milton Country Club and the trails, specifically area number five or trail number five, based on some council input and questions and citizens' comments. And I know myself and probably some others have made personal visits out to the trail system and whatnot. I see some validity to some of the discussions. So just FYI, I met with Robert Drury and talked about, you know, relooking at some options between that. I think it's a trail one and three, or three and five, or one and three, or whatever, but it is in that section and that he's going to have Sarah, when she gets back, look at some of the engineering and see if there's some movement that makes sense and is, you know, a win-win for the trail system and dollars and as well as any affected citizens there. So just, again, he didn't have any specific answers, but they certainly are going to look at it and talk to the engineer and see what they can do. And obviously, we'll bring that back to council to take a look at. And another thing, I just want to, I know tonight we approved a retirement package for Jim Craig, and I just, you know, wanted to, I had a nice conversation with Jim the other day, but just to, you know, publicly thank him for, and I did, but, and maybe we can do something later. I know it's a tough time, couldn't really have a going-away-party kind of thing, a retirement party, but just, you know, again, thanked him for, you know, the heart and soul he'd put in, been here for quite a while and made a big, big impact on Milton and our programs and whatnot. So certainly wish him well in his retirement, so. But, and other than that, is there any other council report before we move to staff reports? Okay. We'll move to staff reports. Prag?
Mayor and the city council members just want to present a summary of the various projects going on in the department. Again, last month was a very busy month for the department in terms of the permit activity. Fortunately, we are not seeing any dip in the number of building permit applications received by the department because of this COVID-19. Last month, the department reviewed around 70 permit applications. This is up by more than 10 to 15% from last month. The total number of building permits issued were around 220. The building permit inspections were around 550, and line development inspections were around 357. The number of tree removal permits almost remained the same. Last month, it was around 45. This month, it's on 47. Some other project updates. The department had a very successful pool permitting workshop on June 23rd. It was attended by almost 24 participants who were seated in a very socially-distanced way. For the Equestrian Rural Zoning Update Project, we had a very good presentation in front of the Equestrian Committee on July 15th last week, and we got some very good feedback from the members. And based on the feedback, we will be updating our Equestrian Update Project. On August 5th, we have a virtual septic tank workshop in collaboration with the City of Alphata and the City of Roswell. The Trailmaster Plan Project, we had a very good presentation in front of the city council a few weeks back, and we will again be presenting this in front of the city council on August 17th for a final vote and adoption. And as I mentioned previously, the Tree Conservation Ordinance will be in front of the city council on August 3rd. So the more, some of the other meetings. Tomorrow, that's on July 21st, we have a BGA meeting. There are two items on the agenda. Nothing very controversial, pretty straightforward. On July 22nd, we have a planning commission meeting. And in the planning commission meeting, we have the fireworks stand text amendment on the agenda and one preliminary plat. The design review board meeting is on August 4th, and the first CPAC meeting for the launch of the comprehensive plan is scheduled for the week of August 10th. The date has not been finalized yet, but it will be the week of August 10th. That's pretty much it for me. Any questions?
Any questions for Prag? Laura?
Question on the DRB. Thank you for that addition to your report. Are we caught up in the DRB on demos? And I know there was a backlog, but it was because of COVID, but, so we're caught up?
We are caught up. So again, on, in the July, the DRB met after three or four months. So there were four demos on the agenda. The DRB did approve two demos, and these two remaining demos, the applicants did not show up, and those items were deferred for the August 4th DRB meeting.
Okay. All right. That's good. Thank you.
Okay. Paul?
Prag, on your first slide, you were talking about the number of permits issued and for building and some of the other measures that you make. One, this one. What's, with the impact of COVID, how has that affected the staff load? Are we, are we current? Are we experiencing a, any delays? What's the status of the timeline for somebody processing a request for a permit?
Yes. So there was a backlog in the month of February and March, but now we are caught up. The timelines are basically, the first review generally goes out within 10 business days, and the second review goes out between seven to eight business days. There are some applications that require some special attention. Like today, also, you are on the agenda, there was one drainage easement under consent items, right? So that drainage easement was one of the plan reviews that we were conducting. So if some specific issue comes up, like today, it came up for the drainage easement, and it has to wait for the city council meeting, then there might be some delay for some specific case, but generally, there is some reason why those applications are being held up. But to answer your question, Councilmember Moore, we are caught up. We are still having this, we have to quarantine our drawings for 24 hours. So again, people just drop off their, all the drawings in the front lobby, and then we quarantine those drawings within 24, for 24 hours, but still we are caught up.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Prag.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next is finance. Burned out. Okay. Any questions for burned out? All right. Thank you. Okay. At this point, we added to the agenda an executive session to discuss litigation. So I'll open up for a motion and a second to move into executive session for that purpose.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's unanimous. From Councilmember Bentley to reconvene. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. And then I asked, do we, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous, too. Seeing?